I would like to call to order the September 19, 2023 meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you'd kindly call the roll.
Andres Paradello.
Present.
Deborah Raine.
Present.
Peter Pivko.
Present.
Steven Mayans.
Present.
Will Caronte. Let the record reflect that Will Caronte is not in attendance. Patrick Mayfield.
Present.
Gene Marcellus Jr.
Present.
Next order of business is approval of the August 15, 2023 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, aye. Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Chairman, Board Members, Angela Van, planning and zoning administrator. There's no cases that City Commission approved since your last meeting, but staff wanted to bring aware that item number three, planning board case number 1961, was being removed from the agenda. You don't need to continue. It's just been removed from the agenda. Any questions?
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Next on our agenda is our remarks from the chairperson, at which I have none. Then we go to declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin by disclosing that I had a brief Zoom meeting with the owners' representatives in planning board case 1949. Nothing discussed that that meeting will prevent me from deciding the case solely upon the evidence presented this evening. As to all other cases. I think so, 1949A. I believe you're right. As to all the cases, I have had no ex parte communications. I've received no written communications. I have conducted no investigations. I have made no site visits. I receive no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? Let me start with you, Andre.
Yes, I also had meetings with the owners' rep, or the ones representing the case number 1949A. None of the discussions that were had will be weighing on me for any kind of approval or disapproval of the project. As to the matter of all the other cases that are being presented tonight, I have not had any ex parte communications, have not had any, received any written communications, or conducted an investigation, or made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much, Deborah.
I did receive an email for a request to meet on planning board case 1949A. However, I did not meet with them. Any decision I make regarding that particular case will be based on the evidence presented this evening. And as to matter to the cases presented this evening, I have not had ex parte communication. I have not received written communication. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I do request that these disclosures and all written communication be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Captain.
Yes, sir. With regards to Palm Beach case 1949A, I also had a discussion with the applicant, that my decisions will be based on the information presented tonight. Regarding other items on the agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications, have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, and have not made a site visit, nor have I not received expert opinions. I request these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Patrick.
I did participate in a Zoom meeting with the representatives of planning board case 1949A as well, but my decision tonight will not be impacted by that discussion. With respect to all other agenda items this evening, I have not had ex parte communication. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Gene.
For case 1949A, I did receive a request for a meeting, but I did not meet with the applicant. As to all matters before the board and on the agenda tonight, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. All right, that now brings us to the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you. May be seated. So our first planning board case is number 1950. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Board Members. Matt Butler with Isominger and Stubbs Engineering. I'm here representing, standing in for Construction Technology, Inc., who is requesting a special use permit on behalf of 2914 North Flagler LLC for a dock that exceeds 100 feet in length. I apologize, I have been sort of thrown to the wolves here. It was all very last minute. No one can make it from our office, can you go? So just to give you a little-
Okay, case denied.
Just to give you some, to give you some background, I am the coastal engineer who obtained both the Department of Environmental Protection and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permits for the dock in question. So I really don't have a whole bunch of information. The dock that we're in question is 164 feet, which exceeds the 100-foot limit, and we're requesting approval to build that 164-foot long dock. The other docks in the area, on both sides of the property, all exceed 100 feet and are, on average, a similar length of 162 feet plus or minus. So unfortunately, I really don't have any-
Well, we'll also hear from staff. And any questions of the applicant while he's here? Let me start with you, Gene. Questions? Patrick?
No questions.
Captain, Deborah, Andre. All right, thank you so much. Let's hear from staff, please.
Alexis Sanglier, planner for the record. So this is just a brief summary of 2914 North Flagler. It is located in a residential area on North Flagler, and it is a new construction home. The waiver request is for-
I think the issue is at the back, so.
Let the record reflect that Will Caronte has just joined. Deborah? While we're waiting, if you don't mind, let me get a little business out of the way. Will, did you have any disclosures you needed to make? And can you go through your list here briefly of declaration right here? Did you meet with anyone? Sunshine Law Board here.
So yeah, I had a Zoom call with John Roach and Brian Seymour regarding the Alara dock.
All right. And can you confirm that-
Yeah.
-the decision tonight will be based solely upon the evidence you have here this evening?
Yes, I can. Thank you. So I have, as to the matter regarding, I don't have the number, but as to the Alara dock, I have had, have had ex parte communications with Brian Seymour and John Roach. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. And I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll turn it back to you now.
I don't think it's still. Hold on up.
No AV? So he's got it.
Mr. Chair, we're having technical difficulties in the back, so can you see the pictures at all or not? No? Okay.
No, we're not seeing anything different from up here.
Person working in the back is new. She's making a phone call to see if she can get some assistance here.
Is there, can we describe it? Or how would you like to proceed?
Worst case, I'll say that we can describe and-
I can describe it.
Okay.
I just can't provide you the visuals.
Okay. Then you're going to have to be so good in your descriptions. Oh, there's someone holding something up. Why don't we let her? Go ahead.
Okay.
Unless, unless, Rick, you think it'd be good to take these out of order, but we're going to have this issue for all of them.
I don't know, I don't know if the board members brought their packets. Hopefully you did.
We don't get them anymore.
They're here, though. We can access them from here. Yeah, we could do that. They're on everyone's computer. So if you go to the planning board and pick this meeting and go to the packet, which is the last one, you should see it there. And if they're, do you happen to have a reference as what page number on that? No, just tell us, if you know on the packet.
I don't think she has more photos than it's on the packet.
Oh, I see. Okay. Let's see if we can find it then. Let's see. Hold on. We're going to find it. We have your presentation. We just got to pull it up.
I think it's page 20.
Page 20. God bless you. Oh, here comes help. Here she comes. It's not page 20, is it?
Yeah.
I don't think I'm going to figure it out, honestly.
It's plugged in.
There's got to be something over here.
1950, maybe I look at the wrong one.
That's the one.
Isn't this the one?
Yeah.
The first one? But why is it page one for me?
Yeah. 1950. It's got, let's go like one.
Page one. Because I'm looking down here. It's page number one. That's why. All right. We have, Rick, we have it all in front of us now. We have your presentation. So you can walk through it.
Okay, I can do that for you.
Okay, we can do this. All right, does everyone have it pulled up, page 20 on the packet? Anyone having technical issues? You all have it?
Yeah.
Terrific. We're seeing what you're, what you see now. Why don't you walk us through it?
Do you want me to repeat the summary or move on to the request, if you prefer?
Whatever you think will be most helpful. We at least now can see the property. Can you, can you, he, the docks on each side, do you know what their lengths are?
I can go further on the presentation and talk about that.
You go with your presentation. If we have questions, we'll wait to the end. Go ahead.
So the request is for the length of the dock. It is exceeding over 100 feet. Their justification stated because of safe water depth and preserving the seagrasses that are there. They did provide Department of Environmental Protection the letter that approved them the extra lengths of the 64 feet. And then if you go to slide three of my presentation, that provides a picture of the permit and the permit number, which also is included in my staff report. And then slide five is the dock itself, the location of it. They're also proposing two boatlifts, which are located in the middle one-third. They're not getting a waiver request for the boatlift. The waiver is just for the length of the dock. And then the standards of compliance. Staff finds that the applicant meets all the standards. The only standards that they don't meet is the length request of the 64 feet. And then the exist, there is existing docks located both north and south of the property that got approved by City Commission earlier on. And I have their addresses, the length approved, and the resolution numbers of those docks, if you want me to read all of them for you.
I was just curious, the ones adjacent, how many feet do they come out on the north and the south side?
There's a couple different, 2836 North Flagler, it comes out 189 feet. That's, and then like 2830 North Flagler is 162 feet. So this dock would blend in with the surrounding areas.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Let me start with Andre.
I have no, no questions.
Deborah? Not Peter? Will?
No.
Gene?
I also had a clarification question regarding the length of the docks immediately adjacent to the property, north and south. Are those addresses that you provided immediately north and south of the subject property?
Correct.
They are? Okay. Thank you.
My only question is this, and I think I'll be very comfortable with this, but sometimes, I understand some of the extensions needed for the seagrass and other things too. Sometimes, though, they want to go further out because they want a bigger boat. And so I don't always like it when it's kind of reverse it, when you say, right, we need this very large boat, and now we have to have it this much further out in order to accommodate the larger size.
Well, this property is a new construction. There isn't an existing dock there currently.
I'm more curious about the boat they planned. Maybe the, if the applicant knows the answer to that question, is, is, do you know what size boat this is engineered to handle?
Unfortunately, I'm not sure that I know that answer. I would estimate that, if I could recall correctly from about two years ago when I worked on this project, it's something in the 40 to 50-foot range. It's going to go on a boat lift, so it's not a mega yacht or a-
Right, because it needs to fit on a boat lift, you're saying. So it's going to be, it won't be as large.
It's, it's not a mega yacht or a sport fish or something like that. It's probably a, you know, center console, outboard fisherman type of vessel. And then on the landward boat lift, I believe, is going to be two jet skis.
Okay. Thank you so much. That was helpful. All right, any other questions? And if not, does anyone for the public wish to be heard on this application? If not, we're bringing it back to the board. Does anyone have any concern about this? And if not, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I move that the planning board recommend to the City Commission approval of planning board case 1950. A request by Construction Technologies, Inc., on behalf of 2014 North Flagler LLC for a Class A special use permit with waivers for a private dock that exceeds the length of 100 feet, maximum of the subject lot located at 2914 North Flagler Drive. The motion is based on a testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent and substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standard sections 94-36E3 through 5, and sections 94313A3, and sections 94273A2 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
Right, thank. We have a motion.
I'll second-
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, it passes unanimously. See, they brought their ace out to get this thing done.
Now you can ask for a raise.
I was going to say, you shouldn't insist on it. And without any audio visual too as well. Very impressive. All right. I have down here then our next case is 1962. 1962. We're calling planning board case 1962, and we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Nice house.
And we have in our report the slides that you may want to show us. So if you just help direct us.
I have nothing that I want to show you.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I'll just talk. My name is Dale Abbott. I work at Ocean One Marine. I'm here on behalf of Gary Lockman, land, property owner of 4417 South Flagler Drive.
So if you could speak more directly in the microphone, we're having trouble hearing you. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lockman is seeking to build outside of the middle one-third of his property so that he can put a boat lift in for his 45-foot Grady White boat. The middle one-third is approximately 42 feet. He'd be encroaching to the south by, by about four feet with his boat lift. The boat itself wouldn't be over the middle one-third, but the outside pilings of the boat lift would be. And that's it.
Can I ask why it is? I'm not questioning, but I just want to better understand why it is it needs to be outside the middle third?
There's an existing dock that's made of concrete. The pilings are concrete. Move, pulling the concrete pilings and the dock out would be a huge project. So the simplest, and he has a boat lift on the north side of the property as well. So there's, you know, we can't just, if we were to move one thing, it's a, we're-
I'm confused. Are there going to be two docks now?
No, one dock.
One dock.
The dock's existing. It's in the middle one-third. There's a boat lift.
Extending existing dock.
Excuse me, sir?
You're extending the existing dock?
Nope, not changing the dock at all. We're leaving the existing dock as is. We're just taking, putting in a boat lift. The boat lift's 19-
I see. You're just adding a boat lift to the, to the existing dock, right?
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions of the applicant? Gene, we'll start with you. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Patrick?
No questions.
Will?
What is the request? They want to add a-
Request is for a boat lift.
But the boat lift will wind up beyond the one-third? I got you. Okay.
Captain? Any questions? Peter? No. Deborah?
No questions.
Andre?
None.
All right, thank you so much. Can we hear from staff? If you choose to direct us anywhere, you could just let us know the page number, and we'll pull it up on our screens.
Good evening, everyone. Gai Shavulsey, planner. Today I'll be presenting planning board case number 1962. It's for a Class A special use permit for a boat lift at 4417 South Flagler Drive. The zoning is single-family. The use, it's a single-family residence with a dock as an accessory use. It is approximately .45 acres. So if you go to page one of the staff report, you see the aerial.
I'm so sorry, what page reference?
Page one of the staff report for-
Does someone know the page number on a report what that is, so I can get to it? Patrick's going to tell me in a minute. I can tell. It's page 59. Page 59, you said? Okay. Hold on one second. We'll pull this up.
No, it's 117.
117?
Yeah.
Which is it?
That's 117.
117.
On top.
Oh, okay. I see.
Moving exhibit.
We have it here. We just want to find it. That's all. 117.
I've got 59. Go down until you see the yellow break between cases. Oops, too fast.
It's a 117, no.
Too fast, yeah.
But I need to go faster. I see the page number here. See? One second. I lost my little-
I'm a third of the way down.
Thank you. That's okay, right, yeah.
There?
No, 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 I'm here. I'm sliding down. I'm looking for you to find 117. So I'm moving this thing down. Oop, overshot it. 117, there you go.
Right there.
Okay, I see it now. I'm so proud.
Okay, so on the north end and the south end of the property, or actually the north side and the south side along the property, they are both vacant right now.
Give the interruption. It's page 59. This is a different case we're looking at. I apologize.
1929. Case.
Okay, I see it now.
Okay, so the site north and the site south, they're both vacant. And as previously stated, this is an existing dock.
Excuse me, if you could kindly speak more directly to the microphone, we're having trouble hearing you.
Excuse me, sorry. So the waiver request is to install a boat lift outside of the middle one-third of the lot. It will encroach four feet outside of it. And the applicant provided us with the DEP approval, and that's exhibit E of the staff report. So in their request to the DEP, they mentioned removing eight existing mooring piles and removing two boat lifts and installing two boat lifts at an existing dock. So the approximately 78-foot dock will have the 18 by 18 boat lift on the south side that will encroach the four feet outside of the middle one-third. And you could see that on exhibit B. So for the findings and analysis, it complies with the general use standards, the specific use standards, the residential district standards, the additional standards, as well as the waiver standards, except for the locate, the location and setbacks, which is section 94-313A3H, which they are requesting the variance for. So they're required to be within 41.66. Propose is 45.66. Therefore, the request is four feet. And the recommendation is approval based on the findings that they comply with all of the standards.
I will thank you so much. Any questions of staff?
Thank you.
Would anyone from the public wish to be heard?
You have a question?
Oh, I'm so sorry. There was a question.
Well, I was just curious, were there any alternative layouts that were studied to locate the boat lift at the end of the dock?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Is that something that was, would even be viable?
So for the request itself, we did know that they were not looking to relocate or extend the dock itself. But the boat lifts, they had an existing one, which was pretty much proposed to be replaced by this one. So they just increased the size, and it's only going, well, it's going to be four by 18 outside. That's the encroachment. Four feet by 18. But to my knowledge, to answer your question, I'm not aware of any other option that was proposed. I'm not sure if the applicant can answer, if they've explored other options.
Any other questions? Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? And if not, I was going to ask, would anyone from the public wish to be heard? And if not, we're bringing it back to the board. Anyone have concerns? This seems like just a technical violation. I mean, they have the existing dock. You know, to make them tear it down just for four foot encroachment-
They're just moving it to the opposite, they're moving it to the opposite side.
Right, right.
Which creates the encroachment. It's-
Of four feet. You know, we've had some that go right to the border. But if anyone has concerns, let's talk about it.
No, I just, my line of question was just curious if the lift could have been fixed to the end of the dock, but it sounds like the length of the boat itself would overhang the middle third, and so it wouldn't make a difference.
It, it's, you know, it's dead center except for a little bit. You know, it's not like, it just seems more technical, you know, just by a couple of feet, really.
It, it is a single boat lift, or is it a double boat lift on the south side?
It's a single, single boat lift. We did consider every viable option of rearranging this to save the time and the expense of, you know, moving things around. And to, this is really the only safe place to put it. The only other choice is get rid of the boat and get a smaller one. But-
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
If anyone has, unless someone has a concern, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Who would like to-
I'll move to approve.
All right.
Go ahead.
I move that the planning board recommend to the City Commission approval of planning board case number 1962. Is that correct? Yes, that's right now. A request by John Dikenga on behalf of Gary S. Lockman for a Class A special use permit for the construction of a boat lift outside of the middle one-third of the subject lot located at 4417 South Flagler Drive. outside of the middle one-third of the subject lot located at four-four-one-seven, South Flagler Drive, within the single-family, low-density SF-seven residential zoning district. The motion is based upon testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted by, in the staff report, which constitute competent, substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in Section ninety-four dash thirty-six-E, three through five, Section ninety-four-three-one-three-A-three, and Section ninety-four-two-seven-three-A-two of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
Next paragraph.
We have conditions.
One more paragraph, one more paragraph, I'm told.
In addition to this recommendation-
Alright.
In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations in consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously, thank you. Alright, Planning Board Case nineteen sixty-one, that's the one that's being postponed. So that then bring, right, correct, Mr. Green? Okay, then that brings us into Planning Board Case nineteen twenty-nine. And may we hear from the applicant? I have nineteen forty-nine-A, which was a- Okay, nineteen, I have, here's the agenda, is that not? Nineteen twenty-nine, it's throwing me off my game.
We're gonna see if we got this fixed, but we're gonna start over, so.
Just when we're learning this.
I thought I was just gonna skate through.
Is it working?
It is on, on this screen.
But it doesn't, oh, there it is, great, great.
Now how do I get it to stop?
We're not seeing it on ours, but that's okay. We can see it on yours, oh. No, on this right here, I'm looking.
So we're just going until we have it on timer.
One seventeen.
It's on the timer?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you did?
You see it here now, it's on our, it's on our big screen, right here.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Good evening, Ellie Halpern for the applicant, Eric Haberstad. Um, unbeknownst to me, this is on a timer, so I'm gonna have to keep going back. Um, we are looking for a special A use permit, um, to extend the dock beyond a hundred feet to a hundred and sixty-five feet. And let me figure out how to go back here. This is the subject property, and if you can see, um, the property line, I wish I could stop this. Sorry, I don't know how to stop it. Um, the property itself juts to the west much further than some other properties, and therefore the extension of the dock beyond the property line at the current time is only thirty-nine feet. So to extend it out, the additional sixty-five feet will be more consistent with the surrounding docks. More importantly, it will get the boat out of the seagrasses, um, and they're going to add an additional lift. The, um, the dock as it exists now, and as it's gonna be extended, is all open graded to protect the seagrass. Where it currently is, there's only twelve feet of clearance from the bottom of the boat until, um, the seagrasses. And so to move it further out will absolutely protect it, and of course, to extend and put on a second dock. Um, the surrounding docks are, uh, the one to the south is a hundred and fifty feet, and the one to the north, I believe the extension of it is seventy-nine feet beyond the property line. This is consistent with surrounding properties, it will not cause any additional undue harm to any of the infrastructure. Um, they do have DEP and Army Corps permits for the extension, and I'm here to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions of staff, I mean, of the applicant?
And I'm sorry, this, I, next time I'll learn how to stop it.
That's okay, we're taking baby steps as we get our technology back. Any questions from the applicant, go ahead, Will.
So the, the, I assume that the hundred and fifty-six foot dock is the one immediately south?
Correct.
Okay, so why the extra nine feet? Because it wouldn't really be contiguous with what the surroundings are.
The extra nine feet won't bring it beyond that dock. Um, because their dock only extends, because the property line and the sea wall are so much further west, this dock will not extend beyond that one when you add on the sixty-five feet.
So the one sixty-five?
Will not ex-
Now, will they be putting the lifts at the end, like the south property, or they'll be keeping them in the middle of the dock?
There's one in the middle and one at the end.
So with the boat lift, will it be beyond the one sixty-five?
No, it's on the side, it's not at the end of the dock, it's on the south side of the, of the dock.
Okay.
It is not at the end.
Looking at that, um, that picture that we're looking at, um, can you just tell us approximately where it will be when it's done? Either be the property to the immediate north and the immediate south, will it be even, will it be extended?
There is a construction drawing.
Oh, good.
Um, yeah.
One nineteen, okay.
That's the construction drawing, to see where the, where the lifts would be.
Alright, Valentina Broglia, planner with the City of West Palm Beach. If you find it on page twenty-three of the staff report, I have- Oh, it's just not in the presentation, though. Yeah, so you'll be able to find the proposed dock on page twenty-three of the staff report.
Mr. Chair, if I can recommend that let staff do their presentation, the, the PowerPoint may be working, so you'll get a more comprehensive feel.
Alright, thank you so much, may we hear from staff?
So, I don't know if it's working, but I'm just gonna put it up on the screen, just in case it is. Okay. So, Valentina Broglia, planner with the City of West Palm Beach for Case nineteen twenty-nine for a Class A special use permit on a dock extension. Okay, the subject property is along North Flagler Drive, it's zoned as a single-family, low-density with a residential use, and the surroundings are also residential. It is going to be a private dock. The applicant is requesting to extend their existing one-hundred-foot dock an additional sixty-five feet, proposing a hundred and sixty-five-foot dock total for the purposes of safe water depths and preserved seagrasses. Section ninety-four-three-hundred-and-thirteen of the zoning code permits a maximum length of a hundred feet for a dock. All docks proposed beyond a hundred feet must receive written approval from Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which the applicant has provided and had, has received approval from. The existing dock, the existing dock of a hundred feet and boat lifts were permitted in accordance with standards for dock construction and were constructed, constructed in two thousand and twenty-one on the subject property of thirty-fourteen North Flagler Drive. The proposed dock is shown in the picture, uh, in front of you. Staff finds that the request complies with the Sections ninety-four thirty-six-E-three, ninety-four thirty-six-E-four, ninety-four thirty-three-hundred-and-thirteen-A-three, ninety-four-two-hundred-and-seventy-three-A-two, and will comply with the following of the end, government requirements upon approval of the waiver. The waiver requested is sixty-five feet for a proposed dock of a hundred and sixty-five feet. Previously approved existing docks that are adjacent to the property are shown in front of you. They have been, um, approved into the commission. Staff is recommending approval with conditions based on the findings that the petition meets the required standards from the West Palm Beach zoning code and land regulations with the conditions that the dock shall not be used for any commercial purposes, including but not limited to providing access to any commercial enterprise docking a boat for a fee, fishing ventures for a fee, marine salvage ventures, teaching or training of any marine-related activity such as boating, fishing, or diving, and the sale of marine-related products. Prior to the issue of certificate of completion for all proposed docks, for the proposed docks, all morning slips shall be provided with appropriate connections for portable water and electrical service. Thank you.
Could I trouble you to go back two screens?
Which one, I'm sorry?
Two screens from your last one. The one where we listed the, the dock extensions?
The docks?
Yeah.
Talking about this one or this one?
I, I'm not seeing, yeah, this one, this one. So I'm looking at this, it looks like this is gonna be the, the largest extension of them. And what I wanted to know, I understand the argument that this property actually goes further west. Going back to the slide, going back to my original question, I wanted to know where this dock visually will look compared to the north and the south properties.
Um, I don't have that.
Maybe the applicant can, can answer that question for me. So I understand that this is further west, so I'm less focused on the feet, I just wanna know visually, is it gonna be about where those other two are?
I measured it on Papa, so it's not that exact.
Okay.
But if you add the sixty-five feet, the property, the, it will be a total of a hundred and four feet from the property line, not from the sea wall, from, from the property line. And the one to the south is a hundred and nine feet.
Okay, okay, so visually it should be-
It'll be comparable.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any, any questions of staff? Will, go ahead.
So, on- On page one thirty-eight of our package, it shows this boat in a grid. It, what is that showing us? Is that the approximate location of the, the end of the dock?
That's page twenty-two of your report, if that helps you.
So those are, um, the seagrasses that are being, um, preserved.
So the, the shaded area is existing scre, seagrass that needs to be preserved?
Correct, yes.
So the dock would need to be beyond that in order to protect the seagrass?
Yes, for the Army Corps, um, that is what they're approving.
It's not, right, Ms. Halpern, because this would suggest it's significantly further east, and I don't think that's what you're saying. So the seagrass, do you understand, this is, um, this is page, I think twenty-two of the report, it's page one thirty-eight of what we have.
I believe I have it on my slide, the one that you're looking at, excuse me.
I might be able to answer you, the larger lift will be beyond the seagrass. The middle lift will still be within the very end of the seagrasses, however, it'll be much further away from them because it's so much further out. The depth to the seagrass will be, there'll be clearance where the dock, where the lift is now, there's no clearance above the seagrass.
I mean, this would suggest it's significantly further east than the north and south dock. So I'm not sure we're reading this diagram correctly. If you could just look at this picture, it's, I think it's page-
Twenty-two, you said?
Page twenty-two of the staff report. And Will's question was, what does that represent, that graphic? And it was explained that's seagrass, and then we're told the dock's gonna extend past that. That's gonna be significantly past the other two docks.
I think it's more the, the boat interaction with the seagrass, so the further out the lift is, the less interaction the boat will have with the seagrass in that immediate area, is that correct?
So is it more of a depth issue? That even though the seagrass extends that far, the depth of the water would still protect the seagrass?
Correct, the boat will, there'll be more clearance above the seagrass.
So, so Will's question was originally, is the dock gonna extend past that whole box?
I'm afraid, I'm afraid the engineer's not here, and I'm, I would not wanna testify.
But I mean, that would be inconsistent with what you said earlier. Because if it's outside that box, that's gonna be very significantly east of, of the other two docks.
Where it is currently?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, it looks like, it, it depends what this diagram represents, we just don't know. And Will's question was-
Oh, so this is the seagrass box?
If that's all the seagrass, and it's gonna be east of the seagrass, that looks like it's gonna be significantly further out into the intercoastal than both the north and the south docks.
Yeah.
Chairman?
So how would, I guess, how would that compare to page twenty-one? Is that box the same as the box?
See, I'm not sure that box is gonna be outside the box.
Chairman, mine's, so if you see, um, the aerial view, that's a, that's a hundred feet right now.
Right.
You know, they're extending a hundred and six, I'm sorry, sixty-five additional, so it'll be a hundred and sixty-five, which would be in line with the ones, um, adjacent to the property.
Then, then, then the question to Will was not answered correctly. Because the question was, is it gonna be outside that whole rectangle? If it's outside that whole rectangle, it's significantly past. It must be within that rectangle.
Those are the, um, the rectangular is the property line. Um, they do have recipient rights, and per the Army Corps, um, letter that they received, they did receive approval to go further east out into the Lake Worth Channel.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow that. The, the narrow question, and I think we have our answer, is this will be comparable to the one on the north and the one on the south? If that's the case, then this rectangle is not the operative diagram.
The rectangular is, um-
It's the property line.
It's just the property line, right?
The property line, yeah.
So, so actually, I mean, I think, I-
It's the property line.
I think, I think, okay, but I think the question that might clarify it is on page twenty-two, was that property's dock extended?
The one I-
So if you look at-
The one right next to it, do you think south of it?
If you look at page twenty-two, if you look at page twenty-two and look south, and then put your picture back up that you just had.
Okay. It is up, okay.
Okay, so you see on page twenty-two the jet ski dock?
Yeah, that's totally different.
It looks like that south dock was extended. So was that dock originally a hundred feet and then extended to one fifty-six?
Yes, that dock did receive approval to extend it.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is that because the property goes slightly this way, the nine feet will be counteracted, and the docks will be the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, well, if you look at page one thirty-seven of our PDF, um, that graphic is superimposed over the dock, I don't know if that helps.
Say that again?
Page one thirty-seven.
Right.
Um, you have the graphic with the seagrass, and then you also have the dock over it. I don't know if that helps clarify.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, I think we had our questions answered, any other questions? And it looks like, is this nineteen twenty-nine that we're on? Okay, it's nineteen twenty, so yes, we have one speaker, Caleb Bennett. If you wish to come forward? Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, Caleb Bennett, uh, I represent the owner, uh, to the north of the property, thirty-one hundred North Flagler. I'm also his son-in-law, so kinda give, uh, you know, great, great, great speeches. If you can't tell, my heart is, uh, literally beating out of my chest. So, uh, not, uh, you know, we've, we've been out of town, so this is kinda the first we're, we're hearing about, uh, this approval process.
Right.
So we haven't really gotten a chance to see it ourselves, nor do our own studies for navigational purposes. You know, some of it is, uh, that, that's one of our main concerns, is exiting, entering and exiting with a, with our, with our vessel, and how it impedes with them as well. Um, so really, you know, as it sits, I would say we object, but we're also, but we want a continuance to be able to work with our neighbor to the, to the south of us, to kind of see if we can figure out, uh, you know.
The testimony has been that it's gonna be comparable to your dock, do you have an objection to that?
So, uh, how, how it sits, uh, just our biggest thing right now is, is navigational. We just haven't had a chance to really look and see how their dock, how, how it's going to impede with, with ours next to it. So all we're, all I'm asking for is just a continuance, to be able to talk to our neighbor to the south, to be able to look at the plans, see, and then see if we can figure out-
Well, let me give you some assurances on one thing. We're only a recommending board, so if you vote to recommend it, it still has to go before the City Commission, there's still gonna be a few weeks, right, before that happens? So there's still time before there's a final vote.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So you'll have a chance, irrespective of what we do here today, to have it.
Yeah, oh, I, I'm totally respectful, that's all I'm asking for, that's the only thing, is just, we haven't, we haven't seen it yet. So I just, I just wanna be, we just wanna have a chance to be able to look at it,
uh, and work with our neighbors to the south, we just, we don't wanna kind of, we don't wanna be bad neighbors, we wanna be good neighbors, so.
That's, that's all I got.
Well, thank you. Alright, but anyone else from the public wish to be heard? And if not, we're bringing it back to the board.
So I have a question for staff, per your comment. Do you, um, so based on, on this graphic, right, your dock is currently that, an L-shaped dock? You're to the north? Okay. Do, does staff know what the distance is from the end of their dock that is pointing south to the dock extension?
Uh, no, staff doesn't know what the distance is, however, the dock proposed is in the middle one-third, which is what is regulated in the zoning code to provide that distance between, um, docks.
I gotcha. So the distance is irrelevant because it complies with where it's supposed to be on the property?
Correct, yes, it is within the middle one-third.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions? And if not, let's bring it back to the board for discussion. Does anyone have concerns or objections about approving this dock? I mean, to me, if it's going to be very comparable to the property of the immediate north, immediate south, there still could be time for this gentleman to discuss it with his neighbors. But his dock goes out that far, you know? So it seems like to say, you can't go that far, it could have navigational issues. May not be fair. In any event, if there's no other concerns, then I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I move that the planning board.
You have to read from the darn thing. You have to pull it up.
I'll move that the planning board.
Oh, he's got it. You can second it.
Recommend to the city commission approval with conditions of planning board case number nineteen twenty-nine. A request by Eleanor B. Halpern of Halpern Law on behalf of Eric Haberstadt for a Class A special use permit to extend an existing dock beyond a hundred-foot dock length limitation of the subject lot located at three zero one four North Flagler Drive. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of the fact that the application complies with the required standards in sections ninety-four dash thirty-six E three through five, sections ninety-four dash thirty-one, or three-one-three A three, and sections ninety-four dash two seventy-three A two of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations in consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Will, did you want to make a second?
Second.
Since you tried to make the motion. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is any further discussion? If not, all those who favor Seadefy by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Ms. Hepburn, if you could get together with Mr. Bennett here, and maybe we could start the process to have your issues addressed, okay? All right. Please no more dock cases. We're done today, Mr. Seymour. I know. I'm so sorry.
It's talked like a pirate day.
We're done. We may have one of these every other meeting, and we've had, what, twenty today?
Mine is going to be so much more fun and exciting.
Well, hold it. We haven't called your case, but we will.
Rick, planning board case nineteen forty-nine.
Don't we have a quota per meeting with so many docks? Yeah, we had to have a dock.
Unless you wear a bowtie.
The bowtie exception, all right. He got us on that technical.
That's offensive, of course I did.
All right, let's hear for you, Mr. Seymour.
You want to officially call me?
I did, nineteen forty-nine.
I was talking to Peter. For the record, Brian Seymour Gunster on behalf of the applicant. So by the way, I think Rick did this intentionally, but this is talked like a pirate day. So that's why you have all the docks today.
Right.
So it's a very nautical theme, not just Peter's hat. So I appreciate you all tonight, with me tonight are Peter Rosenthal from Savannah, and Matt Butler, who you saw earlier, who actually does know about this project because he's worked on it in great detail.
Although he smoked the other one, without a problem.
So if you have questions for Matt, he better be able to answer them this time. And John Roach, of course, is certified planner in my office. So this is an accessory dock for Alara, which you all approved last December. The site is between Pine and Butler Streets, just south of Curry Park, about three point three-two acres, which point one-five acres is east of Flagler, which does contain riparian rights for the property, which does then allow for the dock to be there. As you know, Alara is approved as a mixed-use development, four hundred and fifty-eight residential units, and about thirty-one thousand square feet of ground floor commercial. So this dock is not available to those commercial folks. It's not available to the public. It is solely going to be available to the condominium owners that are within Alara. Because we have the riparian rights, the dock is permitted by right. And by the pure math, within the zoning and land development regulations and the number of units, it would allow for up to thirty-one slips. This is a request for seven slips. Now, I'm not going to lie to you and tell you thirty-one slips would absolutely fit because we'd have to go all the way out in the channel, but certainly a whole lot more than seven could have been done. We did try to max this out. The reason we're here tonight is for special use permit because of some waivers that are needed to mitigate the environmental impacts as well as meet some regulatory requirements. We do have our Corps of Engineers permit, and we have our DEP permit, and we're about to get the submerged land lease. So everything is in line. And the reason that these waivers are there is exactly what the code requires. And what you see here is the dock. So if you're at Alara, and you walk across the street, there's a sidewalk, which is a condition of approval associated with Alara. Come across, and then you'll have a sidewalk, sidewalk connection to a ramp. The ramp then goes up to a decorative security gate. And then the first sixty-seven feet you have there is paddle grass, which is about a fifteen to forty percent coverage, which DEP then says, can't touch, got to avoid it. One of the criteria as to the extension of the dock, and one of the things we're going to extend for, is those environmental impacts. We need to avoid those impacts. It then runs down on a slope. We end up with the number of slips all within the middle third. These will not have any mooring outside of the seven slips that you see there. What you see in purple surrounding the dock is a railing, which is one of the things we need a waiver for, which DEP required to prevent mooring. So you know that you're not going to see boats that go outside of the box that you see there with those docks. You're not going to see one on the end extending out. You're not going to see one on the side, or more than one on the side. You will only have those seven slips. So the waivers that are requested tonight are, again, due to environmental concerns, depths, regulatory requirements. The length is a ninety-three-foot waiver to avoid impacts on the seagrasses, scouring and dredging, the things that the code specifically references. Specifically, it says in ninety-four dash three thirteen A one sub three that the waivers would be necessary to reasonably accommodate the allowed number of boat slips, avoid damage to the marine environment, avoid extensive dredging of the lake bottom, or permit full use and enjoyment of the dock. Now, we're not going for those full boat slips, but we do have a number of them there. And we do not want to dredge, and certainly, we do not want to adversely affect the marine environment. The height waiver is there for the decking. We do need to provide an ADA ramp that comes up. It actually goes over the bulkhead, which, the way the code reads, anytime you go over the bulkhead, you would need to have that waiver. There's also additional waiver because of those forty-two-inch above decking railings. So we've got the railings to avoid any mooring that goes. Those are cable rails. They're not thick, very light, but they are required by the DEP. And then the code requires a sanitary pump-out facility if you have over four slips. We do have the seven, but none are going to be live aboard. There are not going to be people who are there regularly. It's not a commercial marine facility, and the DEP has said, no. And so we need a waiver from the provision for that pump-out facility as well. So those are the waivers that are proposed tonight. For context, what you can see here are the docks that are in the vicinity. If you go from the south to the north, on the left side of the screen there, you have one watermark that has a three hundred and fifty-foot dock off of the bulkhead. The Palm Beach Yacht Club is a four hundred and seventy-plus or minus foot off the bulkhead. Recently, the city commission approved fifteen twenty-five North Flagler Drive at two hundred and eighty-two plus the Dolphin. I know that was a heavily contested, lots of people, but it was approved. Just for context for you all that would be there. And then, of course, ours, that has about a hundred and ninety-three off the bulkhead, very far, as you can see from the navigable channel. So we're not going to impede that channel whatsoever. And then Curry Park, which doesn't have any docking, but is an approved development as they, the city itself and the CRA approved Curry Park, has some as well that go about a hundred and seventy feet from the bulkhead. So we're within those contexts of the docks that have been there. This has been reviewed. It has been designed by experts, and it meets all the standards for code compliance under ninety-four dash thirty-six E three and four, ninety-four dash three thirteen A three, which are the dock standards specifically. I talked about some of the specifics of the waiver standards as well under ninety-four dash two seventy-three A two, and those are also met. We do agree with staff's conditions, and we are happy to answer any questions, but I will not talk like a pirate.
Okay, let me start with Gene. Any questions? Patrick?
Not yet.
I mean, that's fair.
I did have one question. Well, access to the dock be allowed at all hours of the day and night?
So we don't have a specific plan on the access for the docks at this point, to be completely honest with you. It's possible that a couple people may, if you buy the penthouse, you might have your own slip. It's possible they might have, but it's not going to be a regular run. It's going to, any resident, unless, you know, we sold one to, for instance, the guy in the penthouse, any resident would have to actually work through the concierge that goes with Alara, which is not going to be a twenty-four-seven operation, but I don't have hours specifically for that.
Will, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, the only question I did have was about it sticking out, but the picture that you provided, it looked visually, just from looking at this picture on page thirty-four, that the way Curry Park bulbs out, that you would actually be below Curry Park. So it's a good context picture, especially with the yacht club. I didn't realize their dock was four-seventy, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Pete?
No questions.
Deborah? Andre?
No questions.
I had a couple quick questions. So you want a hundred feet, excuse me, ninety-three feet further out? Isn't sixty-three feet of that just attributable to the seagrass?
So sixty-seven feet of it is the seagrass. And then you have to go out from that to be able to get the full use to avoid, you want to avoid the seagrass, so you don't want to put your boat.
Right.
So you got to go off a little bit from that. So at sixty-seven, you start your.
So if there were no seagrass at all, for example, you would, I mean, it sounds like the lion's share. I see, because of depth, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The other questions I had, a lot of the variances, whatever you're asking for, some of it's required, right? Because you're required to put the railing in?
Yes, the requirement is to put the railing, and we're not allowed to put it in the pump-out facility.
And the same pump-out. So, so other than those that you're required to do to comply with the law, we have the, one extension, partially due to the seagrass. Is there anything else that just simply benefits your client as opposed to complying with all the rules and regulations you have to? It sounded like most of them were just mandated.
It's pretty well mandated. So if I could have put it in a hundred feet, we would have put it in a hundred feet.
Understood. All right, thank you. All right, may we hear from staff? See, Linda, you're spoiled because it's working now.
So, good evening. Linda Louie, principal planner for the record. Just to quickly summarize, this is a request for a Class A special use permit with three waivers from the dock standards of our zoning code. And that is to provide for the construction of a seven-slip, one hundred and ninety-three-foot-long dock, accessory dock to the Alara mixed-use project, which is located upland of the property. As noted by the applicant, the dock is only for the residents of the Alara mixed-use development. So I won't spend too much time on the waiver requests, but I just wanted to quickly go over them. The first waiver request is to the length. The applicant is seeking a ninety-three-foot waiver from the maximum allowable length. In terms of justification, as Brian had explained, it is necessary to achieve adequate water depth, prevent damage from observed seagrasses. No mooring is permitted in the area of the observed seagrasses as conditioned by the FDEP permit for the proposed dock. And the city has granted Class A permits for other docks that are longer in length. For example, the recently approved fifteen twenty-five North Flagler Dock, which is located south of the property, and that dock length was measured at two hundred and eighty-two feet. And the proposed dock does not, or the length does not impact the navigable channel. That's a tongue twister. As noted in staff's report, staff does not have any issues with the length. The second request, waiver request is to the height. Per the zoning code, no portion of the dock shall extend to the top surface of the bulkhead, and no structures can be constructed on the proposed dock. The applicant states that the height standards cannot be met due to the requirements of the FDEP permit that was issued for the dock. The first requirement from FDEP is that the dock has to provide a five-foot clearance between the mean-high water line and the decking, which exceeds the height of the seawall. And secondly, FDEP does require the installation of a forty-two-inch handrail in areas, all areas that, where mooring is not proposed. So that is highlighted in this yellow area here. And that is to prevent the docking of boats in areas of the seagrasses and to prevent any potential impacts on the protected resources. The dock is also designed, oops, to be ADA compliant. So in order to provide that even transition between the ramp and the dock, the connection between the ramp and the dock has to be built over the seawall. So as provided in the staff report, staff does not object to the waiver request to the height. The final requested waiver is to the sanitary sewer pump-out facility. The applicant is proposing not to provide any pump-out receptacle, and that's for the reason that it is not a commercial dock. The dock will not be occupied by livable vessels, and the discharge of wastewater is strictly prohibited at the docking facility per the FDEP permit. Staff does not object to the waiver request. This waiver was also reviewed by the members of the Plans and Plats Review Committee, which include the Engineering Services Department, as well as the Public Works Department, and they had no issues with the waiver request. In terms of project review, the dock plan has been reviewed by the Plans and Plats Review Committee on July thirteenth. There were no concerns raised with the proposed dock plan. And the proposed dock has been issued the required permits from FDEP as well as the Army Corps. And those had been issued on March seventeenth and April fourth, respectively. So as noted in the staff report, the conditions of the FDEP permit does not allow for the dock to conform to all the required dock standards of the zoning code, and that's the basis for their waiver request. The applicant has also noted that the conditions are non-negotiable, and therefore, those conditions must be adhered to. Additionally, the waivers are necessary for the applicant to install a reasonable dock to provide for the enjoyment of the Alara residents, and that is to which the applicant is entitled to, given their riparian rights. So based on staff's findings and analysis, staff is recommending approval of planning board case number nineteen forty-nine with condition, as staff has found that the application complies with the general use standards, the specific use standards, the additional standards, as well as the waiver standards. The conditions that are provided for the dock, and the applicant has agreed to them, there are six conditions, and these are standard requirements for the dock, and they relate to the prohibition of commercial dockage, no advertising signages permitted, turbidity control measures, addressing requirements, lighting control, and the requirement for a dock covenant and a hold harmless agreement for the city's seawall. And that concludes staff's presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start with you, Will. Patrick?
No questions.
Gene? Not at this time, right? Peter?
I'm becoming a dock expert.
Deborah? Andre?
I did have one question. I was just curious, what size boats would be, like, the max size would be able to fit?
I'm going to defer that question to the applicant.
Smaller than my age, forty feet. Be forty.
Okay, and I saw that on the, like, the first two that were closest to land. There's one behind the other.
Jet skis.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we're bringing it back to the board. Any concerns, any issues? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion for approval of case number nineteen forty-nine A. I move that all planning board recommend to the city commission.
I move that all Planning Board recommend to the City Commission's approval of Planning Board Case Number nineteen forty-nine A, Z-two-three-zero-six-six-six, sorry, six-zero-zero-three-eight. A request by Brian Seymour, Esquire, and John P. Roach, AICP of Gunster, on behalf of nineteen-eleven North Flagler Drive Associates LLC and nineteen-nineteen North Flagler Drive Associates LLC for a Class A special use permit with the waivers to the length, height, and sanitary sewer pump-out facility as specified in the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three staff report for the installation of seven-slip accessory dock to the approved Alara mixed-use development, generally located on the east side of North Flagler Drive between Butler Street and Pine Street. The motion is based upon testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Planning Board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in Section ninety-four dash three-six E-three and E-four, Section ninety-four, three-one-three-A-three, and Section ninety-four dash two-seven-three-A-two of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations. And then, do I need to read the conditions, the second one?
Yep.
Okay. "In addition to the recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the Zoning and Land Development Regulations in consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach."
Second. Have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right.
No more docks. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Planning Board Case nineteen thirteen. May we hear from the applicant?
Chair, I'll need to recuse myself from this case. The applicant is the current client of my office.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, anything further he needs to say? All right.
Okay, you can flip out this one?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just wanted to state for the record that I am also the President of the Dixie Business Association, and I did receive a request for a letter of support from the applicant. I did not read the letter request. I forwarded it to my Vice President. From looking at the package, it doesn't appear that we issued a letter of support. So I just wanted that stated into the record.
Mr. Thomas, anything further he need to say? Do you, do you think that that contact will influence your decision one way or the other in these deliberations?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right, may we hear from you, please?
Hello, Planning. Hello, Planning Board members and members of the audience. My name is Franny Frisbee, and I'm here before you this evening with my team and representing my family and business to present our future land use map amendment presentation for the three-nineteen Belvedere property. My team and I are very excited about the revitalization opportunity for what we believe is a pivotal site in the El cid-Southland Park neighborhoods. We have been collaborating with the community members, the neighborhood, existing tenants, and our city leaders over the past year to help gather ideas in an effort to raise the bar for mixed-use development along the South Dixie corridor. I'll turn it over to Josh, who will lead us through our future land use map amendment presentation that will include our comprehensive analysis on our future, on our proposed map amendment. Thank you for listening to us today.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Josh Martin, and I work with Frisbee Group. We're based, investment firm based in Palm Beach, and we're here tonight to discuss a future land use map amendment for three-nineteen Belvedere Road. I wanted to make just a few comments as we get started. As I mentioned, we're here with Frisbee Group, and we work both in Palm Beach and in West Palm Beach, most recently in a mixed-use project, which for similar concept for what we think three-nineteen may become via Flagler by the Breaklers, and we would like to bring this level of design and competency to, to the site in something that we think in a mixed-use fashion would be a complement to the surrounding neighborhoods. We kind of sit between the El cid neighborhood and the Southland Park neighborhood, and so we are cognizant of both of those neighborhoods. We submitted this future land use map amendment request on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. And we then began working with the neighborhood, and we made a commitment that we would go through and have neighborhood meetings to get ideas and understand what the concepts may or may not be in terms of a redevelopment or an investment on the site. And so tonight, we are here to discuss the future land use map amendment. We then subsequently, on August eighth of two thousand twenty-three, submitted a site plan and rezoning application that is on file with the city. And that application goes into the details of site plan, architecture, height, scale, and mass, and what have you. We have scheduled three neighborhood meetings for that application, which will begin actually this Thursday at the basement of the Redeemer Church at six PM. So if you have nothing to do on Thursday night, come by at six PM, and we're going to start those neighborhood meetings. I want to, on the record and to the neighborhood, and I've said this, we've said this a number of times, as part of that site plan and site plan application and rezoning application, we have a lot of work to do, from transportation, from architecture, to neighborhood permit parking, to all these sorts of things. And at the end of the day, we always say, if the neighborhood doesn't want what we're proposing, we're not going to do it. And that's just plain and simple. We recently went through a scheme like that in another locality, and we decided to withdraw the application completely. So if the neighborhood is not on board with what we're proposing, we're not moving forward. And that's just the case that it may be, and to the record. And so tonight, again, we're here for the future land use map amendment application, not the site plan and the rezoning application, as you know. And so that's the presentation tonight that this is based on. I also say that there were some renderings that were included in the original application for the future land use map amendment that were conceptual, very conceptual renderings that have been, have been advanced in our architecture discussion, which the architecture we submitted with the site plan, which is much different than those renderings, and we feel like we're moving in a way that is more in keeping with the neighborhood. But again, that's a whole separate conversation that we need to have outside of what is before you tonight, in my opinion. So the site is at the intersection of Belvedere Road and South Dixie Highway. It's an interesting site because it's a small city block bound by Pershing to the north, South Olive to the east, South Dixie to the west, and then Belvedere Road to the south. It's very easy to do all the calculations from a land use perspective because it's exactly one acre in size, so it makes the math somewhat easy when you're talking about existing zoning and future land use. Today, the existing zoning is general commercial. We're not talking about that tonight. What we are talking about is the future land use, and that is a commercial east designation for a portion on the, on the western side of the parcel, and on the eastern side of the parcel is a commercial. We have surrounding land uses that are all sorts and kinds. We have single-family residential, we have hotel, we have commercial, and we have office. The proposal tonight is to extend the existing commercial east future land use designation across the site where commercial future land use designation exists today. In the commercial land use, future land use designation, residential uses are not permitted. And it seems that if we are going to try to introduce some residential mixed use, that we would have the residential be abutting more of the neighborhood side of the lot with maybe some more of the mixed use toward the Dixie side of the lot, which is conceptually kind of where we are in terms of the thought pattern. The signs were posted on September first, two thousand twenty-three. Mailers were sent out August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And just so we have a solid understanding, too, we are unapologetically like to attend community outreach meetings. And so during the past year, I'm just going to read a list of how many community meetings we've had. What we do in all of our projects is before someone receives a zoning notice mailer from the City of West Palm Beach, you receive a mailer from us inviting you to neighborhood meetings. We do this in every project that we do, and so we take the mailer list for the radius that we would have to notice as part of the city's requirement, and we pre-notice all of those people and then start having neighborhood meetings around that. In the instance of our most recent upcoming meetings, we even took that a step further. We've noticed six hundred people for the Thursday night meeting that's at the Redeemer Church before they have received anything from the city on the site plan and the rezoning application. So we started on eighteenth July of last year and met with a resident of Pershing Way. We've had a meeting with a tenant on fifteenth of September. We had a meeting that was open to the public, and that pre-noticed in our office on the twentieth of September. We had a meeting with Commissioner Lambert also on the twentieth of September. We had another open-to-public office meeting in our office twenty-second September. We met with Lynda Louis on Zoom twenty-seventh September. We met with tenants again on the twenty-seventh of September. We met with Nancy Pollam and various phone calls. Greg Goodrich in our office on September thirtieth. Another tenant on ten-thirteen and ten-twelve of two thousand twenty-two. We met also with Hotel Biba on ten-seventeen. Of course, they're an adjacent neighbor. We met with the McCanns on the eleventh of October. We met with the Neighborhood Board on August thirty-first. We met with another tenant on September, or excuse me, October twentieth. Another tenant on the twenty-first. Another resident of Pershing Way on July twenty-fifth. We had an El cid neighborhood meeting at the Redeemer Church on November twenty-second, and another neighborhood meeting church in El cid at the Redeemer Church on November twenty-ninth. Those were requested to be done in, in season, if you will, and not during the summer months so that people could attend that, those meetings as well. And then we had additional phone calls with Nancy Pollam on November twenty-first. So as part of this process, we have done outreach to the neighborhood. And so I'll go into the analysis, and I'm going to come back to kind of where we are in that. This just shows you a current and proposed future land use designation of the maximum development potential for the affected area. Today, you could build about forty-five thousand square feet by right on the site. The majority of that would be commercial uses, because again, the residentials are not allowed. What we're requesting is to introduce a more residential mixed-use scheme and to increase the FAR on a portion of the site that's about point-six-three acres, again, to convert that to the commercial east. We have gone through a complete level of service analysis, everything from drainage, potable water, wastewater, solid waste, schools, and traffic. We have the letters of certification from all of those agencies on, across the proposed site. This is, the future land use map amendment justification is kind of a, a number of reasons we feel like. Number one is we feel that the history of the commercial incentive district, this was a CID district where a line was drawn two-hundred feet deep on parcels along Dixie Highway for commercial east designation to promote the redevelopment. And we have a split designation right now on the site, and we feel like having that whole designation makes sense. We are a city block, so we don't share property lines with other neighbors adjacent to that. So it's not like we're extending zoning up against another person's property line because we're bound by public thoroughfares on all four sides. We feel that the site is suitable for mixed-use infill development, and commercial future land use does not permit residential use. So it's actually promoting non-residential uses against the neighborhood, which we feel is inappropriate. We have conducted our neighborhood outreach. We have, would like to consolidate a split future land use designation on the site. We have gone through a level of service analysis and received all of our certification letters, and our standards for compliance are based upon changed assumption. As all of you know, the South Dixie corridor has changed a great deal over the years, and we are trying to bring a supply of a residential housing stock, which we think is needed. It's served on a transit corridor, so it feels that it is the appropriate way to be placing residential density on a transit corridor that's served by bus lines and existing transit opportunities. And, and so we went through that analysis as well. This is a rendering of, conceptually, kind of what we're thinking. We're going to be going through the neighborhood and talking about this of a new mixed-use building on Belvedere and facing South Dixie with a residential above and commercial on the ground floor. We feel the need to raise the bar of the architectural discussion so that for the next person that's doing something on South Dixie, it needs to be just as good as what was what we're proposing. So we're working with a world-class architect to make this happen. And again, we have a lot of work to do with the neighborhood to go through and have discussions around architecture. But with that being said, I will stop here and let Lynda pick it up for the recommendation of staff, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or anyone from the audience.
Before you turn over to her, any questions of this gentleman before we hear from staff?
Can you, can you talk a little bit more about the architecture of the building?
So right now, we, when all of our outreach, we did a number of precedent imagery studies of different case studies throughout the US, and we were really focusing on courtyard housing. So kind of the concept that we're going toward is that we would have a, building kind of a Via Parigi or like Via Flagler or Via Meisner on the site. So today, we would have buildings that would front the frontages. So right now, if you think about Pershing Way, that, that, those houses front the back of the house, basically, and it's a loading zone and those types of things. We want to remove the automobiles from site. We want to organize the loading. We want to make sure that the parking and transportation is working. But the architecture, we feel like we're going to be somewhat in a Spanish colonial, Spanish mission style. And again, working with a world-class architect who has done these mixed-use developments successfully, specifically in Florida. And so we're working through that. But that's kind of the architecture that we're thinking of. We have some height, scale, mass discussions to have as well. But we're kind of carving out the center of the site, so it would be a courtyard that would run through the entire site, and it would be housing and mixed use around, around that. So similar to, Via Parigi was kind of what we were really looking in the study. The height of Via Parigi is actually the exact same height of this building, of the head building, that we were looking at for, for Dixie and Belvedere.
Yeah, I think the three-D model that is used at the beginning of the presentation is far superior than this last image, and I would recommend you don't use this image.
Okay.
Because it's really very negative-looking in terms of the massing.
Okay.
All right, any questions of the applicant? Go ahead.
So is it planned to be similar to the, the project on Palm Beach where it's retail on the bottom of the entire footprint with the residential above? Or how is that mixture?
No, so the concept is that the retail would be on the ground floor for a portion of the property that's closest to Dixie. And then as you transition back, we would be re-knitting back residential fabric only that would have bought the residential on Pershing.
So similar to the name of the statement?
Magnolia Court. I'm sorry, yes. Right, right.
Retail upfront condos above on Dixie, but then housing.
Yes, and we would kind of go back into the neighborhood in terms of the use would become more residential.
Any other questions of the applicant? So if not, let's hear from staff. Go ahead. I'm sorry, will you finish, or I didn't mean to cut you off?
Yes.
Okay.
Lynda Louis, Principal Planner for the Record again. Okay, so as noted in the staff report, the property currently has a split land use designation. The eastern half is designated commercial, and the western half is designated commercial east. So the applicant is requesting to change the eastern half from a land use designation of commercial to commercial east, which would consolidate the future land use designation of the entire property to commercial east. So this slide shows the subject property in its current and proposed future land use designation and in context with the surrounding future land uses of the area. It's important to note, as the applicant has mentioned, that the commercial east land use designation supports a mixing of uses with residential and commercial uses versus- use designation supports a mixing of uses with residential and commercial uses versus the commercial future land use, which supports commercial uses and does not allow for residential use. So the justification for the amendment is to consolidate the split future land use of the parcel to enable the future redevelopment of the parcel with a cohesive mixed-use development, and the mixing of uses is appropriate for the area and infill redevelopment and will provide for better land use transition between the commercial uses along South Dixie Highway and the single and multifamily residential in the Elsie Historic District. So per the comprehensive plan, all land use map amendments must be evaluated to determine if the proposed future land use meets one of the five standards in the Future Land Use Element Policy 1.1.5. Staff has determined that the proposed future land use change meets the changed assumption standards regarding the changes in land use and development pattern. So the South Dixie Highway corridor has been experiencing significant growth and redevelopment in recent years, resulting in the redevelopment of projects along the corridor that are also becoming increasingly mixed-use, such as the constructed Villas on Antique Row and Casimara. Mixed use, the mixed use is also suitable in areas in close proximity to downtown and along major transit corridor, which makes the subject property ideal for mixed use. In addition to consistency with the comprehensive plan, all future land use map amendments are required to provide a level of service analysis for public facilities to ensure that there is adequate system capacity to accommodate the land use change, and this analysis is required per the Florida statutes. This is particularly important if the proposed future land use change is expected to generate greater demand on public facilities than the existing future land use designation. So the level of service is based on the maximum development potential of the affected area and comparing the development potential under the current and proposed land use. So this is the maximum development potential of the existing land use of commercial, and under the proposed future land use of commercial east, that would be its maximum potential of 40,943 square feet. So generally, the commercial east future land use designation is more intensive than the commercial future land use, and it also allows for residential uses. And in summary, the development potential is expected to increase by 20,472 square feet with the proposed CE future land use. In summarizing the level of service analysis associated with the proposed future land use change, the demand is expected to increase but will not cause any capacity issues. As noted by the applicant, staff has received the certification letters from the various service providers indicating that there is sufficient system capacity to accommodate the increase in demand with a proposed future land use change to commercial east, and those letters have been provided in the board packet for reference. Based on staff's findings and analysis, staff is recommending approval of Planning Board Case Number 1913, as staff has found that the future land use map amendment application complies with the Florida statutes as well as the city's comprehensive plan. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start with you, Peter.
No.
Debra? Andre?
So we're just looking at the land use change, that's it. We're not looking at any project.
That is correct. This is strictly for the land use map amendment. The site plan, as the applicant had mentioned, is a separate application.
Okay.
Thank you. Will? Any questions? Patrick? Oh, he's not here, I forgot. Jean?
No questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I have now four cards for the public. If there's anyone from the public besides these fours who wish to be heard on this, please give a card to the clerk. So I would like all four to come forward, Karen's, two behind each podium, Karen Steele, Nancy Pollam, Amanda Skier, and Alex Milan. So please come forward. State your name.
My name is Karen, can you hear me? My name is Karen Steele, and I'm the co-president of the Elsie Neighborhood Association. Tonight, I'm speaking basically for myself because I just got back in town last night and was made aware of the application that was presented and the details. So I haven't had time to review it with the board nor with other residents except those who have called an alarm. We have had multiple meetings with the applicant, and most of those, well, I can tell you there are three meetings. There were a community meeting and some separate meetings with the applicant, and they have been very willing to make changes, but what we've been talking about have been sort of a concept and a design, not the specifics. The alarm from other residents who have called me today and actually while I was away have been in the request for the variances because they were rather substantial from what anyone expected. And I believe Peter mentioned that last photo, which is quite different from two other photos of design that were suggested that they would look at. So I'm, I'm asking under the consideration of the concern of residents that this be continued at this time so we can have a better understanding of how they plan to use the property.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Pum, nice to see you.
Hi, Nancy Pollam. Thank you, nice to see you all. 215 Belmont Road, and thank you for volunteering to do this onerous work.
We're doc experts, if you want to know.
I am going to just share a couple of things with you. We understand that this is for zoning only, and I have not heard of a single person in the whole neighborhood that I've talked to or has approached me who's opposed to that. However, other than one neighborhood-wide meeting November 22nd, which was two days before Thanksgiving, and then a duplicate meeting two days later, there has been no community meeting. And I know that Mr. Mayans and Mr. Green and the city has really been adamant about public outreach. I live five houses from the corner where this project goes, so I'm in that target zone. I have never heard of any other meetings. So people who went to the first meeting got a general idea of, okay, well, you know, it's all kind of loosey-goosey, but we're looking into some concepts, and then it just dropped. And then we began to get, a few weeks ago, the notice for rezoning, nothing about a project, then we discovered there was a project on file with the city with, and what we know, what some of us know, is commercial east is the ticket for waivers. So then when you look at what's on file that's being reviewed by the city, and it's got 10, nine to 10 waivers, and some of them are pretty excessive, people began to hit the panic button here because, and I was, I was called and asked to meet with them, and I said, why me? All of my neighbors on my street want to know what the heck's going on. This is a constrained piece of property. A lot sounds like a city block, it's a half of a city block, the length of a city block, but the width is not a city block, and it is in a very congested intersection, and we're, they're very worried about all kinds of things with this. So I'm hoping if it could be delayed, that would be great until we kind of sort this communication business out. Picking people off one at a time is not the way to get good communication going through a neighborhood, for those of you who have been there. I just believe we need to take this as a learning example so that we can all take a new breath and work collaboratively on something that will please them and serve the neighborhood well, too. I don't think anybody wants a fight, but what I can tell you is communication is everything. And you know how the old game we played as kids, telephone? If you don't have neighborhood meetings, you get 57 varieties of panic and concern and why the heck didn't anybody talk to me, and I don't know what they're talking, you know, blah, blah, blah. So that's what ramped up, and so a continuation would be good, and a mandate going forward that you and the staff both support, which is, let's clean up this communication, let's don't meet with people individually, let's let everybody hear the same thing.
Thank you, Ms. Pum. We appreciate it. All right.
Good evening, I'm Amanda Skier. I live at 234 Pershing Way, which is less than 200 feet from the subject property. I also am the chairman of the Historic Preservation Board for the City of West Palm Beach. I've served on that board for over a decade and as the chair for eight years. So I come to you as a concerned resident of Elsie, but also as the chairman of the city's historic boards, historic board and protector of the historic districts. The city's historic districts are unique from a planning perspective, and you know, I think I personally have some serious concerns about such a significant change in the FAR if the requested flume amendment is granted. The intensification is not compatible with the eastern side of the site, which abuts single-family homes. Doubling the FAR will result in a larger building on the site than what's currently there, as is evidenced by the conceptual rendering that you are all just referring to. And I understand that we're here tonight just to review the flume amendment, not the project. So I would like to focus on the uniqueness of the site, especially in comparison with the mixed-use infill redevelopment projects referenced in the staff report. Although the most recent redevelopment project on this section of Dixie Highway is Casimara, that is located on the west side of Dixie Highway. It's also nine times the size of the site. The Villas on Antique Row are more compatible as a site, but they're still four times larger than this site. In addition to that, I did look at the future land use map, and that site at the Villas of Antique Row is bordered by sites that are zoned multifamily along the east and south property lines. 319 Belvedere is one acre, and just barely one acre. It is surrounded by historic properties, the majority of which are contributing to the historic district, including Hotel Beba, which means that they can't exceed two stories. I'm unclear as to why this is a separate application from the overall project, and I know that my neighbors are concerned and confused about what the implications are of this application before you this evening, but I do know we're all concerned about density, height, and waivers, excessive waivers for redevelopment on Dixie Highway, and this application appears to pave the way for those things. So just to some of the comments, the address, if I could, in my last few seconds, the questions that you asked, the renderings that were shown today, I've never seen and those were not presented at the neighborhood meeting that we had, and one of the things I think that's important, you asked a question, Mr. Carente, about the Magnolia Court.
I'm sorry, if you can conclude your remarks.
Yes, this is my last comment, my last point. Magnolia Court, which is located across from Grotto, which I think you referenced, so that has townhouses fronting the street. The project proposed, if you look at the staff report, the whole first floor is a wall concealing the parking garage, and that will be the pedestrian experience, which is not compatible with the historic district.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, is Alex Millen still here? Okay. Then I received three more cards, Meg Coffey, Mackley Reed, and Michael Ford. If you could come forward on either podium. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this, whose name I have not yet called? And if not, please give a card to the clerk. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having us, thank you for your work. My name is Mackey Reed, I live on 306 Valencia Road, and I'm a member of the Elsie Board. I have a myself, and just as a member of the neighborhood, I just, I want to reiterate that I understand that this is just about the future land use, but as the Frisbee Group has presented their site plan and they use it today, I would just like to reiterate that the neighborhood has not seen this current site plan, and the neighborhood does not necessarily have any statement of support for it. We're very concerned about density, height, parking, and the nine waivers it requires, and you know, we're happy to hear that this won't happen if the neighborhood doesn't want it to, but we just want to officially be on the record stating that. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Michael Ford. I'm the owner of 309 Pershing Way. If you saw the photo earlier of the back of the Sushi Joe building, that's the view I have out my front door. So my residence is about 25 feet from the proposed lot. I, I'm actually in favor of redeveloping the lot, but I do think that there are a lot of concerns, specifically about the, the use change, because it'll probably double the amount of residential units that'll be built on that site. I think the current planned parking is 60 spaces for 30 units plus commercial space, which to me, just using my brain, seems pretty light. And in addition to that, the, the height is also a major concern, you know. I have a one-year-old that lives right across the street from there, there's already lots of cars that race down that street constantly. So I, my, my concern is that if we're, if this is presented in the spirit that, oh, this is just a land use change, it's not just a land use change that we're talking about, because once a land use is changed, it's going to be sold to another developer that could develop the property with these plans or with any other plans. So I think if the spirit of wanting to do this in cooperation with the neighborhood is in earnest, I think these, these things should be dealt with together and not separately.
Thank you. Was there anyone, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Meg Coffey. I live on Granada, so just a few blocks north of the site we're talking about, and really everyone's kind of touched on most of my points, but I would say, to Nancy's point, we really just want the community to be heard. I was a part of the first meeting, and then I had a baby, which I was not able to attend the second one, but, and the first one was with the board, but really like what kind of, you know, even questioned me is, you did see that they said they sent out a notice on August 28th, but actually, we all received those in our mailboxes last Thursday, and they were post-stamped September 11th. So that even, you know, didn't notify our neighborhood about this, and that is kind of why all the neighborhood really was upset, and we all felt like we were just kind of blindsided, oh my gosh, we have to get to these meetings and understand this. So I just wanted that to go on record. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this? And if not, I'll give the applicant who asked the opportunity to respond to some of these a rebuttal time, and then we'll take it for board discussion.
Yes, and I forgot to mention, I'm going to submit for the record, we have 27 signed letters of support for this application, many of which are from the, the Elsie neighborhood. I think the, the thing tonight is that we are here to talk about a future land use map amendment. We are not here, and we're not ready to, and that's great because we, we want to work with the neighborhood, and I agree with Nancy, we want it to be something that we can collectively come to a consensus with, but that is a site plan application, and in terms of the waivers, we don't know where we're going to end up on that because we have a lot of work to do on the site plan and a lot of height-scale mass adjustments and what have you, and so again, we have worked with the neighborhood. I don't know if an applicant that has worked on it over a year for a future land use map amendment, and so I think that that is earnest, it's earnest that we have letters of support for this future land use map amendment, not the site plan or the, the architecture rezoning yet. So that's something that we will, we publicly write on this record, we will not come back to any board with the site plan or the rezoning application that's on file until we have neighborhood support.
All right. Any questions of staff or of the applicant before we take it back to the board for discussion or vote? And if not, I, go ahead. You have a question to whom?
Where's staff?
Okay. Ms. Louis, thank you.
So several people have mentioned these waivers, right? Somebody specifically mentioned nine waivers. Can you give some color as to what those are?
Yep, so just keep in mind that the applicant has mentioned that those waivers are tied to the site plan, and today, this is just the land use map amendment application that is being heard tonight. So the applicant has acknowledged that work needs to be done with the site plan, and whether or not they proceed with the, the number of waivers that they're currently requesting is up in the air at this time until, from my understanding, they meet with the neighborhood further.
And to clarify, those waivers would have to come back to this body?
That is correct. It does have to go through the planning board process as well as final approval with the city commission.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, let's bring it back to the board, and I think on this one, I'm going to go up and down the row and get people's impressions. Jean, I'll start with you, what are your thoughts? What are your thoughts?
Actually, I had a question. One of the speakers mentioned that they were, I guess, chair of the City of West Palm Beach Reservation Board. Is that a body that's sanctioned by the city?
I believe so. Mr. Jean, yes.
And then the speaker was in here in her official capacity as chair.
That was my understanding. She was just giving her background.
Okay, all right.
Your view then on the application?
They're paid much more than us.
Now that you're officially a full member, no longer the alternate, I thought I'd give you the courtesy.
Yeah, so because there aren't any site plan approvals before us, and half the property's already zoned, the designation that they're asking for, I'm in favor. I don't have any opposition to moving forward with that. But I think there should most definitely be additional conversation with the community, and definitely give advance notice and have frequent meetings, you know, in case certain members of the community are unavailable. So it needs to be an open discussion. And hopefully, they'll stand by their statement that they will not proceed unless the neighborhood is, you know, bought in. I know you can't please everyone, but by and large, there should be at least some enthusiasm that, you know, their purposes will be met, and then also the site plan will serve the community in a positive way.
Thank you. Will?
I mean, I agree with Jean, I think.
We all agree with Jean, but go ahead.
You know, the fact that it is a split use right now, it would make sense for it to be contiguous. I do like, you know, that it would be commercial on the Dixie Highway side. I personally see no difference between it and Magnolia Court or the other types of developments that already have commercial on Dixie and residential behind the property. So it would be conducive with what you're viewing on Dixie Highway in terms of the commercial side of it, but I've seen there are other projects that they've done on Palm Beach. But again, keeping those two separate issues, right? So we're not looking at the site plan, we're just looking at the zoning. Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I think this is an early, early step in the process. It's like you have a bunch of eggs, some flour, and some yeast, but you don't know what type of cake it's going to be nor how high it's going to rise. So I think we'll wait until the next step. There are many issues in this development, parking being probably one of the major ones. We'll see how the developer solves the issues with the city.
Debra?
Yeah, I think since there's no site plan being presented tonight, that that's a discussion for later on. But for the future land use map amendment, I think the planning staff, as well as, the planning staff has presented its point, and we see where the property is really split with commercial east and commercial, so that's going to come together. But I have no problem supporting the land use map amendment.
Andre?
No, I don't have any issues with the land use amendment. I think that this is pretty common for projects. I feel like that the community outreach is going to be huge going forward for this to even go even close to what was shown on the screen earlier. I live close by, I walk to Sushi Joe, I've been to Kitchen several times. It's a great little nook for the neighborhood. So it's going to be a hard sell, I think, but I know the Frisbees do amazing work, and with the help of the community, I think it could be a really successful project and a, kind of a nice anchor for the end of Belvedere. So, but yeah, I know, we're just looking at the land use, and I, no questions with that.
I just want to add my own thoughts. I also be supporting this. I think the issues raised by the residents are important ones. We've heard from Frisbee that they intend to only move forward without that support, and we'll be looking to see how they succeed. My impression from the neighbor comments so much is a wariness more than absolute opposition. And if they have an opportunity for that input, hopefully, something can emerge. I am comforted by one fact. I have seen the Frisbee Group do many developments over the decades in this city and Palm Beach, and by and large, I think they do really quality work. I think with input from the neighbors, this could be an amazing project. It has that potential. So I will say to the Frisbee, we have your work cut out for you as far as building that neighborhood support, but I think at this early stage, you have the support of this board. That's what we're hearing. So I'll be looking for a motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion. Okay. I move that the planning board recommend to the city commission approval of Planning Board Case Number 1913, Z22040015, a request by Josh Martin, the Frisbee Group, on behalf of 319B Renaissance II Asset LLC, for a small-scale future land use map amendment to change .063 acres of the overall 1.01 acre subject property located at 319 Belvedere Road from commercial to commercial east. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes the findings of fact that the application complies with required standards in Policy 1.1.5 of the City of West Palm Beach Comprehensive Plan.
We have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, and any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will move on to our last case, and we're giving the full five minutes you need to get through your presentation, so I don't want you to feel rushed at all.
Thank you for the record. Alex Hansen, City's Comprehensive Planner. So the item in front of the board tonight is Palm Beach, sorry, Planning Board Case 1971. This is the EAR or Evaluation and Appraisal Review Amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. The board may recall that we had a conversation about this item a month ago at the last planning board meeting. Just a little bit of background, so state statutes, specifically Chapter 163.3191, indicates that at least once every seven years, every local government or each local government in the state needs to evaluate its comprehensive plan and determine whether plan amendments are necessary. This is to reflect any changes in state legislation as well as any changes in local conditions. So consistent with this, there's also a number of other requirements, state requirements, statutory requirements, dealing with specific deadlines, timelines for the evaluation and appraisal review, as well as penalties and other restrictions. As I indicated, every municipality in the state of Florida is required to go through this process. The first step is for a municipality to indicate, based on a state deadline, as to whether we believe that changes to the comprehensive plan will be required. So the City of West Palm Beach, per the state deadline, was required to indicate by December 1st of 2022 whether we believe that any changes to the comprehensive plan were required. Consistent with this, on November 29th of 2022, we sent a letter to the state indicating that we had evaluated, or we had reviewed the comprehensive plan, and we had determined that changes would be necessary. So this is basically the beginning of the evaluation and appraisal review process. In response to the city's letter, the state indicated that, consistent with statutory guidelines, we had 12 months or a year in order to transmit these amendments to the comprehensive plan to the state for their review. So we have until November 29th of 2023 to send the packet of amendments or transmit the amendments to the state. A little bit of background on the comprehensive plan, we have 13 elements. They deal with a number of issues, future land use, transportation, housing, utilities, historic preservation, we have the downtown master plan. Some of these elements are required elements. State statutes have a number of elements that are required, but we also have a few elements that are optional. These are elements that the city decided to incorporate into the comprehensive plan. For example, in our case, historic preservation and downtown master plan are elements that are not required. So these are, again, examples, future land use element, transportation element, where we have a series of vision or an introduction, and then we have goals, objectives, and policies. The, out of the 13 elements in the comprehensive plan, we are proposing revisions to nine of them. So the ones that you see in yellow are the elements that we are proposing for revision, and the ones in white are the ones that we are not amending at this time. In addition, we have 26 maps in the comprehensive plan. These maps deal with a multitude of issues, infrastructure, natural resources, or other type of facilities located within the city. I'm going to now give a brief overview of the proposed amendments for each one of the elements that we're changing right now. For the introduction and administration element, we are updating some references to the evaluation and appraisal review, providing some background. We refer to some of the previous EARS. We are including some references to the one that we are currently going through. We're also adding some references to the property rights element, which is an element that we added a couple of years ago, based on state requirements. And we're also updating references to some agencies. For example, the element referred to the Palm Beach Metropolitan Planning Organization, that agency is now called the Transportation Planning Agency. So we're changing that reference in the element. In addition, introduction administration element includes a number of definitions, and we are updating or revising some of those definitions, mostly those related to housing. Future land use element, we are doing some minor changes to certain components of the element, but we're doing two, let's say, bigger set of changes to the future land use element. The first one pertains to new language that we're adding that will add flexibility for the provision of affordable workforce housing. This is consistent with some recent state legislation and some city efforts. Some of you may have heard about Senate Bill 102 or the Leave Local Act. There's also other new, or recent legislation dealing with workforce housing. So we're making some changes to a few policies and some goals in the future land use element to allow for more workforce housing or affordable workforce housing in different areas of the city. As part of that, we're making some changes to Policy 113 by adding some language that may provide additional density or intensity in certain future land use designations. This will be only for on-site affordable workforce housing developments. We're also adding a new goal, six, to the future land use element. This will provide a general framework for the establishment of land development regulations that will promote affordable workforce housing opportunities. I want to emphasize that the specific details of these programs are going to be developed over the next few months in the zoning and land development regulations. Right now, this is just setting up that framework in the comprehensive plan. The details of these programs are going to be in the zoning and land development regulations again. The second, I would say, more significant amendment to the future land use element pertains to some changes to the Norwood Mixed Use District. So we have three mixed-use districts in the city, the Broadway Mixed Use District, the Curry Mixed Use District, and then the Norwood Mixed Use District or N Mod. This is in the area of Norwood Road, 24th, 25th Street, and we have for that district a development cap. So the development in the area is limited today to no more than 850,000 square feet of non-residential uses, as well as 650 residential units. Between development that is on the ground today in that area, plus two recent projects that were approved within the last few months, we are almost at that residential cap. So we're almost at 650 residential units, and we're also at about 300,000 square feet of non-residential uses. So we are reaching the residential cap, but we're still going to have 550,000 square feet of non-residential uses available. It is our thought that based on development patterns that we have seen over the last few years in these areas, well, in surrounding areas, that any, most new development in this district would be residential in nature. We will probably have some non-residential uses, but we believe there's going to be more residential uses than non-residential uses proposed for this district. As a result of that, we are proposing what we are basically calling a swap. So we're going, we are proposing to transfer 400,000 square feet of that non-residential development into residential development in the form of 400 residential units. Again, this would be more consistent with what we foresee the future development patterns to be. From an infrastructure standpoint, this transfer of non-residential uses to residential uses would, if anything, actually reduce some of the infrastructure pressure, as this residential development should, for the most part, generate less traffic and have less need for infrastructure than the, than the non-residential uses that it would replace. So again, as a result of this, the cap will go from 850,000 square feet of non-residential to 450,000, and then the residential cap would go from 650 units, will go up by 400 units to 1,050 residential units. For the transportation element, it's mostly some general updates where, again, we have had a number of different plans, studies, approved over the last few years, so we are reflecting those studies. We're also removing some references to the trolleys. The city no longer has trolleys. We have other modes of transportation. We are adding some additional references to Brightline, that reference from changing from the MPO to the TPA that I mentioned previously, is also something that we're doing here. We're also adding some policy to reflect the city's interest in exploring the establishment of multimodal level of service. Right now, we just have a roadway level of service, but we are interested in exploring some, a level of service that evaluates all the different modes of transportation. We're also adding some references to micro-mobility, remote work, and other transportation demand management options. Finally, for the transportation element, we are updating what is called the right-of-way setback table. This is a table that outlines the maximum right-of-way for some roads in the city, and we have determined that there was some erroneous information for some roads, so we are updating that table as a result of this. For the housing element, we are removing some duplicative policies, and we're also updating some references. We had a lot of language that referred to attainable housing. The Housing and Community Development Department is now using the terminology affordable or workforce housing, so we're changing those terms in different policies. We're also updating some references to different federal and state housing programs, and we're also updating the city's population projections and to a new 20-year planning horizon. So recent state legislation requires the comprehensive plan to have a 20-year planning horizon. The previous requirement was for a 10-year planning horizon. So as a result of that, we are changing the references to this new 20-year planning horizon, and we are updating some of the population projections in the housing element associated with that. We, I also, we're adding a cross-reference to the new goal six in the future land use element. Again, this is the one dealing with workforce housing that I referenced a few minutes ago. Utilities element, this is one I actually, we're doing a lot of updates. These are guided by our utilities department. We're updating the city's water level of service. We're also, again, as I mentioned, updating the planning horizon to 10 and 20 years. We're also, consistent with this, doing updates to what used to be known as the 10-year water supply plan, is now the 20-year water supply plan. But as a result of that, our new planning horizon is going to be 2045. And so we're changing our population projections, we're updating those, some of the data on water needs, water supply sources, treatment strategies, groundwater recharge practices, and also we're identifying new capital projects. And all of this, again, is being guided by our utilities department. Recreation and open space element, it's some minor updates, some changes to some timelines for certain reports, plans, and studies. Historic preservation element, also minor adjustments dealing with some terminology. We're also updating some information regarding the historic preservation ordinance and removing some references to some out. some references to some outdated programs, fairly minor. Capital improvements elements, we are revising policies dealing with if future developments need to address potential infrastructure deficiencies. This is some language that are both our engineering, our utilities department provided to us. We are also updating the city's five-year capital improvement program. We're identifying all the major capital improvement projects for the next five years. Downtown master plan element, we're in, updating the introduction section of the element to reflect the most recent population and development data in downtown. We're also updating and clarifying some policy to reflect current practices, names, and programs. For example, we had a number of references to the city place area, now called the square, so we're updating some of those references. We are adding some, some references to the Nora or North of Railroad Avenue District. We're also updating some policies to reflect the character and some desired connectivity for the northwest historic neighborhood. Finally, for the downtown master plan, we are removing a section of Appendix 1 that is called the Maximum Development Capacity Table. This contains some outdated information from 2007. I just, just to clarify, we have some development caps for downtown, but those are established in what is called the Transportation Concurrent Exception Area, and that language is already included in the future land use element and transportation element, and we're not changing that. This is just some outdated information that is included in this table. Finally, for the map series, as I mentioned earlier, we have 26 maps in the comprehensive plan. All of these maps need to be updated to reflect the changes in the city's boundaries. This is as a result, some annexations in the western part of the city. And we're also going to be updating, or we are updating data on many of the maps, most of the maps, to reflect the most current conditions. I do want to say, there's three maps that are in your packet that may require further refinement between now and city commission. We got some of the partial data that we needed for the updates, but we think that we must still need to make some adjustments to those three maps. Couple of them are transportation, one is dealing with historic structures. As far as the timeline, again, we have been working on this for the last several months. We have been coordinating with different departments. We had a number of workshops in August. We went in front of the Downtown Action Committee, the Historic Preservation Board, the Planning Board. We also had a workshop with the city, with the mayor and city commission last month. Then last week, September 13th, we went in front of the Downtown Action Committee. This is because they are supposed to hear any updates to the downtown master plan element. So we presented only the changes to the downtown master plan, master plan element, and the DAC recommended approval of those changes. We're here today, September 19th, Planning Board, and then moving forward, we'll be going to city commission sometime in November, probably November 13th will be the date. And that is for the first reading or transmittal hearing. And then if we do that, we'll be, again, complying with that November 29th deadline provided by the state that I referenced at the beginning of the presentation. Per state requirements, once we send the entire packet of amendments to the state, and this is to what is now called Florida Commerce, used to be the Florida Department of Economic, Economic Opportunity, so then the state, as well as some regional agencies, will have up to 60 days to review the packet. So our estimation is that the second reading or adoption reading will not be happening until probably March of 2024. Again, Staff's recommended approval of Planning Board Case 1971. This recommendation is based on the findings that the proposed amendments meet or comply with Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, as well as with all other appropriate Florida statutory requirements, and that the amendments are consistent with the different elements of the city's comprehensive plan. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Alex? Looks like it was a lot of work.
Mr. Chair, could you leave that recommendation up?
Absolutely.
And, and Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion that incorporates the language in the recommendation there?
I certainly would, when the time, I can't make that motion, but we will certainly, one of the board members may make that motion. Go ahead. Gene?
I have a question.
Oh, question, okay.
I think it was the Northwood Mixed Use District. You were going from 850,000 square feet of residential to, what, 450?
Correct.
Are there any allowances for, I guess, the swap, I think, that you mentioned, for those that are now zoned residential, to have some sort of a mixed use element?
The entire district is mixed use, entirety. So it's just one mixed use district. So you could have residential or non-residential uses pretty much in any parcel in the district.
Okay. Any other questions? Can we just second his motion? Or? No, we can't. One of us has to make the motion, and you.
Yeah, actually, I have questions.
Pardon?
I have questions.
Okay.
So I noticed early on in this very long and extensive report that you had said that it made some changes about the housing and it redefined workforce housing. So I noticed a lot of the strikeouts were among, among the percentages of income.
Correct.
So has that been stricken, and you're taking just workforce housing as a group? Or are percentages of income still a factor in deciding what is workforce housing and what is attainable housing?
The term attainable housing is no longer included in the definitions. Now we have the workforce housing definitions, or the affordable workforce housing definition. And per the guidelines provided by our Housing and Community Development Department, this includes all those within, between 80% and 120% of the area median income.
Okay.
So that is the new definition, and we have removed the definition of attainable housing. It's no longer used.
Okay. Then I also noticed that there was a strikeout where it said the city place was contributing $100,000 per year to the trolley or transportation system that was struck out. Was it struck out because it's city place, or was it struck out because the $100,000 will not be coming? Or both?
Kind of both. That was a requirement included in some language that is no longer valid for the city place DRI approval. So that required, that was a requirement that they no longer have to comply with. Right now, we do not have a trolley system. We do have other transportation options related, is contributing to some of this mobility options that the city has, but the requirement for the $100,000 annual contribution is no longer part of the DRI requirements.
Okay. Also, it showed that 2020 is the base year for population. You've only had, or you're saying there's only been a 10% population growth. I forget what the time period was, but it was through 2020.
That was for the downtown area. We.
So when you talk about city population, you're not talking citywide. You're simply talking the 117,000 residents is just in the downtown?
So the 117,000, that is the census information. That was the last census data in 2020. So that was 117,000. From that point on, all what we had, and we also have some of the data for downtown. I have to relook at the numbers, exact numbers. I want to say it was about 10,000. I don't have it in front of me, but it's here for downtown. That was the 2020 census data. As far as any data that we have since 2020, that is just citywide, and that is based on some estimates by a group called the Bureau of Economic and Business Research out of the University of Florida. So we do not have estimates for downtown since 2020. We do have some citywide estimates for 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Okay, and then also, so what, what are the potential changes to single-family zoned housing? Will that become, will that be increased from one dwelling unit?
No, no, we're not proposing, based on the, the revisions to the table that you mentioned, we're not proposing any changes to the single-family districts. The potential changes, and again, some of the details will be included in the zoning and land development regulations that we'll be working on over the next few months, will be for other districts, will be multifamily, and as well as some of the other non-residential districts that we have. But no changes to single-family.
So a single-family, if it's SF1, it's staying in SF1?
We're not, we're not changing density, intensity, or allowed uses.
All right. And then finally, Appendix A talks about the list of required thoroughfare right-of-way setbacks.
Correct.
Required street widths. So is there future plans to narrow roadways while our city grows?
The city is looking at some roadway reduction opportunities, but not, that is not related to this right-of-way table. That is a little bit of a, of a different effort. There may be some lane elimination efforts and other things, but that is not associated with the data necessarily in this table. This is, just reflects the potential ultimate right-of-way that the city may necessitate for, for a roadway. Sometimes we already have the amount indicated in the table, sometimes we have less, but we may need, we think that we may need a little bit more in the future. But in reality, this is not so much for specific roadway projects, it's just kind of an ultimate goal. We, we think that we may need, or the city thinks that we may need this much right-of-way eventually at some point.
And so you mentioned in your comment a few minutes ago about potential lane reductions?
There's some general discussions about, I, there's no specific project that I can tell you that is going to happen over the next, but there's some discussions about potential lane eliminations in some areas, but there's no specific project that is active right now.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
How is the future look?
We're looking for a motion, and Mr. Thomas may help guide us as to the wording of that motion. So who would like to do it?
I'll do it here.
Okay.
I move approval, Planning Board Case Number 1971. This recommendation is based on the findings that these proposed amendments meet Chapter 163 Florida statutes and all other appropriate Florida statutory requirements that are consistent with the different elements of the city's comprehensive plan.
Is there something now? Okay. We have a good motion, have we a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hansen. All right, unfinished business, new business, old business. If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.